Okay, let's all stand for the prayer by Mr. Roy, followed by the pledge by Mr. Pendergrass.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given us. Dear Lord, we just ask as a council and mayor that we'll conduct this meeting in accordance to your will and for the people of this great city. We just ask that you lead, guide us, and direct us in all things, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please face flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, according to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to call the March 6, 2023 Mendon City Council Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. A crowd like this is either good or terrible, so. Are there any additions to our agenda? Okay, there being none. Are there any public comments on our agenda items today? Okay, there none. All right, starting off, we have item A, which is to adopt the minutes of council regular session held on February 6, 2023. Can I get a motion we adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Roy?
Second.
A second from Ms. Mitchell. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, being none, let's vote. All right, motion passes. Next, we have appointment of Public Works Director, item B. And I'm recommending to the council that we appoint Tyler Wallace as Public Works Director. I've seen him keep communication between the Public Works Departments. He's always available when he's needed. He has good working knowledge of all the Public Works Departments, and I also believe he has the respect of his employees. So Tyler, where are you? Okay, come on up, come on up. I want everybody to be able to see. This is Tyler. He's been with the city, what, a year and a half?
Year and a half.
So this is Tyler. If I could, again, I recommend Tyler Wallace for position of Public Works Director. If I could get a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Miles?
Second.
A second from Mr. Thomas. Any discussion on this? Okay, there being no discussion, let's vote. Hey, I present to y'all the new City of Mendon Public Works Director. Next, we have item C, appoint, appointment of Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm recommending for this position Zita Williams. Zita has worked at the Rec Center for 18 years, and I believe I've known her for 18 years, and she always handles herself very well. She's easy to work with, but she's not afraid to push back when she needs to. She has a heart and a vision for the future of the Rec Center, and she's willing to take on the challenge. Zita, if you would come on up here, I just want everybody to be able to see Zita. So again, I'm recommending Zita Williams for the position of Recreation Director. Can I get a motion that we do this?
I move to appoint Zita Williams as Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Mendon.
I have a motion from Mr. Pendergrass. I need a second.
Second.
We got a second from Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Okay, there being none, let's vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. I would like to present to you the new City of Mendon Fire Chief. Next, we have item D, that's appointment of Chief of the Fire Department. I'm recommending for this position Brian Williams. I believe he has the respect of the firemen and the fire department. I believe Brian has a vision for the future of our fire department. He has grant writing experience, which I think will really pay off in the future. I would like to say that we had, for really all the positions, we had very good applicants. Fire chief, we had a lot of outstanding people apply, but I just, I really feel strongly and very good about recommending Brian Williams for the position of Fire Chief. Brian, come on up here. Let's just let everybody see you. So again, I'm recommending Brian Williams for the position of Mendon Fire Chief. Can I get a motion that we do so?
I move to appoint Brian Williams as Chief for the Mendon Fire Department.
Okay, I got a motion from Mr. Roy. Can I get a second? Okay, I got a second from Mr. Miles. Any discussion on this? Okay, there being no discussion, let's vote on this. Okay, I present to you our new Fire Chief, Brian Williams. Next, we have item E, appointment to the Mendon Main Street Program Downtown Development Commission. Mahalia Hoto just retired from the City of Mendon as Main Street Director, and she sent a recommendation of Sarah Overall to take the place of Laura, Lauren Davison, and that term expires in September of 2023. So again, it's been recommended by Ms. Hoto, our former Main Street Director, that Sarah Overall would take the place of Lauren Davison. Can I get a motion we do this?
Upon the recommendation of Mayor Cox, I move to approve the appointment of Sarah Overall to the Mendon Main Street Program Downtown Development Commission to fill the vacant term as presented.
Okay, you got a motion from Mr. Pendergrass?
Second.
Second from Mr. Roy. Any discussion on this? Okay, well, let's vote. Okay. All right, motion passes. Next, we have item F, award bid number 012023-0, well, it's the 2022 through 2023 Street Improvements Project. This is the streets that we voted to put forth for bid last month. It's Country Club Circle, from Germantown Road to Lewisville Road, Bayou Avenue from Pine Street to High Street, High Street from Bayou Avenue to Shreveport Road, North Middle Landing, West Street to Shreveport Road, South Middle Landing, Shreveport Road to Horton Street, East Street, Martin Luther King Drive to Industrial Drive, Carolina Street, East Street to Sibley Road, and intersection of Davenport Drive and Erwin Thompson Drive. Our city engineer Riley Company went over the bids that were presented today, and they recommend we go with the lowest bidder, which is Benton and Brown for 1.466475, so 1.4 million dollars. May I have a motion we do this?
So moved.
Okay, you got a motion from Ms. Mitchell, and a second from Mr. Roy. Any discussion on these?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that Terry, our Superintendent of Roads, he actually has a chart that he works off of, that he grades all these roads, and that's how we do this. So we don't go out and just say, okay, we're going to do this street or not do that street. We try to have a systematic way of picking these streets that we overlay. And so I know that the last two years in my district, we've missed not getting anything done, but we're rated fairly well on Terry's spreadsheet, so there is some rhyme and reason to how we do it.
That's a very good point. Any more discussion on this? Okay, I have a motion second. Let's vote on it. Motion carries. Next, we have item G. And this is a condemned property. The property is owned by the Helen J. Drake Estate. It is 422 East Union Street. This is in District D. All condemnation notices have been put out and certified later was sent in return to us. We've received multiple concerns about this property and multiple complaints for many years. Is there anyone here today that represents this property? Okay, there appears to be no one here representing this piece of property. Again, they've been properly notified, and there's no one here. So that being the case, I would entertain a motion that we condemn this property.
I'm going to authorize Mayor Cox to issue an order declaring the property condemned and further order of demolition of any structure located thereon and the cleaning of the lot within 30 days of its day.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Thomas. A motion from Mr. Miles and a second from Mr. Thomas. Any discussion on this?
There are no shortage of condemned, I mean, condemned properties around the city. This is the first of many that I will be turning in and trying to help clean up some of the issues and blight that we have around the city. Not saying that it's going to be something that we do, you know, five or six times a year, but it's a start.
That's right.
You have to start somewhere, so this is just the start of something that is to come, so that's all I have.
Any more discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion a second. Let's vote on it. Okay, motion carries. Next, we have item I, to adopt an ordinance 1132, an ordinance to abandon the west 14-foot by 50-foot section of the alley running from Elm Street to Center Street in Block 5 of Goode Annex. Mr. Couples and Mr. Quaid own a house that are next to one another, and basically, there's a bit of an alley between their houses, and there's two houses behind them. And what, basically from the letter they wrote, what happens is traffic often goes through that alley from behind their house and down to Elm Street, and it's just kind of really through what really is nothing more than a driveway. So they asked that we close the section that borders their two properties, and they would be allowed to put up a fence where prohibit traffic from flowing through, again, what basically is a driveway. So if I could, I would entertain a motion that we do this.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Roy?
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Mitchell. Is there any questions or discussion on this? All right, there being none, let's vote on it. Okay, motion carries. Next, we have item I, adopt ordinance number 1133, an ordinance to abandon the 50-foot undeveloped street right away with a cul-de-sac running alongside lots 2 through 6 of the Drake subdivision number 3 with reservation of utility servitude. Mr. Gilli, our brother Gilli, came to us and asked us to just abandon this piece of property. There is no cul-de-sac. One was planned to, at the end of Eam Street, but it was never developed. So right now, if you went by there, it just looks like someone's land. But there originally was a cul-de-sac planned and set aside and dedicated, but now we want to abandon it and just give that property back to the property owners that have the property around there. So if I could get a motion on that?
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Pendergrass?
Second.
Second from Mr. Miles. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, there being none, let's vote.
Sorry, I'm trying to click. There it goes. We went green, then went red.
I thought we were going to have a little plot twist there.
I'm trying.
Motion passes.
I may need new batteries.
Next, we have item J. Adopt ordinance number 1134, an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 26 Business Article 2, Occupational License Taxes Division 5, Mobile Food Vendors of the Code of Ordinances, City of Mendon, State of Louisiana. A lot of our ordinances that we follow are very old, and a mobile food truck, I'm guessing, was never probably considered in the ordinances. So the City of Mendon traditionally has used the recommended fees set out by the state, and really, we go by, a lot of times, the recommended maximum set out by the state. The Chamber of Commerce came to us last month and asked us to maybe look at making a specific ordinance for food trucks, and so to be more food truck friendly, which is kind of the wave of how things are going, they asked us to move the rate from what we were currently charging, which was $200, down to $100. So if I could, if we could get a motion that we do this?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1134, an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 26 Business Article 2, Occupational License Taxes Division 5, Mobile Food Truck Vendors of the Code of Ordinances, City of Mendon, State of Louisiana, retroactive to January 1, 2023, as presented.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion on this? All right, there being none, let's vote. Okay, motion passes. Next item we have is item K, a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Mendon and a Junior Service League of Mendon. The Junior Service League used to meet in what, what I've always known, and y'all probably know of, is the Girl Scout hut that's at Victory Park. It's this little building right on the edge of Victory Park, and the Girl Scouts used to meet there. We can't figure out what the original deal was, but there, as far as we can tell, there's no Girl Scout of America group anymore, and if there, if there is in Mendon, there are outside of Mendon. Don't get paranoid, cookies will still come out. But as far as in Mendon, we can't tell there's a Girl Scout troop. If there is one, they're not meeting at that building. The JSL used to meet there, but it floods real bad. It would take in water. And so they have since decided not to meet there, while in the last two years, they've come back, and now they want to meet there again. So the deal we made with them is that they'll take care of the maintenance, the utilities, and all that, that we would like for them to be able to utilize that building, but the liability would totally be on the Junior Service League of Mendon. So if I could get a motion that we do this? Got a motion from Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Second from Mr. Roy. Any discussion on this?
This is for four years?
Four years, yes. The term would expire at the end of our terms. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, there being none, let's vote. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have item L, a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Mendon and the Webster Parish Sheriff's Office. The City of Mendon, I don't know how long, but for some time, has contracted the property tax collection out to the sheriff. The sheriff collects the taxes for us. Y'all might remember, it used to, we'd get a bill from the parish and then another bill from the city. Well, it was kind of confusing. So the sheriff's department's been collecting it. Now we only pay our property taxes to one entity. And that deal, in exchange for that service, the sheriff provides us, the city pays $18,000 a year for the administration of that, and also, he handles the sheriff's sales and the meetings on the courthouse steps. So if I could, we could get a motion to accept this cooperative endeavor agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Pendergrass?
Second.
A second from Mr. Roy. Any discussion on this? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a speed limit change on Country Club Circle. Mr. Roy brought this to my attention, and I can explain it, but would you like to explain it?
I can, be glad to, Mayor. So when you turn onto Country Club off of Lewisville, headed towards, headed back west, there's no stop sign or speed limit posted. Once you get down to the intersection right past Lawson, the speed limit becomes 25. Then, on the coming back, going east, it, right, coming out of Glenbrook School, it turns to 35. So you have contradicting speeds there, and it's really not posted very well. And all the other streets in that neighborhood are at 25 miles an hour, so I'd like to coincide with that speed limit and bring that speed limit sign up to the intersection. So when you turn on Country Club, headed west, you know what the speed is, and then, of course, coming back, what the speed is. Because we have a lot, a lot of kids that walk to school, school traffic through there. I've seen a number of kids almost get run over. So, you know, when I first got on the council, a lot of the homeowners there asked for slow children at play signs, so just trying to do what we can to help curtail speeding in that area as well.
Okay, can I get a motion we change the speed limit to 25 miles an hour both way?
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Roy?
Second.
A second from Ms. Mitchell. Any discussion on this? Okay, there being none, let's vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Mr. Fleer, our city clerk, with the budget financial report for January 2023.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening, residents. I'd like to see a full house that encourages us to do good work. The budget report for all funds for the month of January 23 was provided to you for your review, like every month, so nothing new on that side. I want to give you the sales tax figures for the month of January. The Webster Parish Sales Tax Commission collected for us $673,000. That includes all the TIF districts. Without the TIF districts, $660,000. The previous year without the TIF districts was $550,000, but an increase of 20%. The budgeted amount is 608, so we are $52,000 over budget, which is good. I hope it continues that way, so we're going to go over 7.5. Uh, I hope it continues that way, so we're gonna go over 7.5, 7.6 million, um, which will help the budget tremendously. Uh, the delinquent amount in, was $8,906. Shows the people, or the business pay their, pay their taxes. According to the Sales Tax Commission, the increase is due to increased retail sales, internet sales, and new constructions. So that's encouraging. The TIF districts reported an increase of 31% or $3,000, from 9,000, 9,000 last year to 12,000 this year in the months. Cash report. At the end of January, we count 23 million in form of investments, savings, and actual cash accounts. Previous month was 23.3 million. Some other information related to the finances, the auditors have completed their field work. Uh, they were bugging us for two weeks here in the building, so, uh, hopefully by, uh, the April council meeting, we can hear, uh, the report from the audit. Uh, due date, I believe, is March the 31st for the audit, so, uh, hopefully, we're gonna hear by the month of April. That's all the figures I have. One word, I want to congratulate all the new office holders, Messida, Tyler, the new fire chief, to their new positions. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Fleer? Okay, thank you. No motions needed on that. Next, we have Chief Jared McGyver.
City fines collected, $4,694.50. Crime lab, $200. City court, $222.50. The marshal's office, $210. Indigent defender, $310. Clerk's fund, 14. Ware Center, 5250. The LA Commission on Law Enforcement is $12. Off-duty witness fee is $82.50. Court Case Management Information System, $21. The LA Traumatic Head and Spinal Court Injury Trust Fund, $30. Judicial Building Fund, $70. Judicial Education's $3, totaling $5,922.
Any questions for, uh, Chief McGyver? Okay, there being none, I need a motion. We accept the police report for January 2023 as presented.
So moved.
Is that Mr. Roy? Okay. Got a motion from Mr. Roy?
Second.
Second from Mr. Miles. Any discussion on it? Okay, there being none, let's vote. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a presentation by Sean Hatcher for the Mindon Fashion Parade Award Winners. He is the chairman of the Mindon Main Street Program slash Downtown Development Commission.
As you know, we had a lot of operating in great times, and a lot of hard times, and we're doing the floats and everything. We have some awards, and some of the folk, folks that were participating in the program. The most spiritual award goes to Cruel and Masses.
Get your shirt.
And then, um, JR TC was the best marching, um, entry. I don't think they're here tonight, but JR TC, we'll be getting this to them. And then our most creative entry goes to the EM Exchange Students Club. I don't think I've seen any of them tonight, even make sure they get that. And the best marching band was, uh, Men in High School. And then, our last one here is the overall award goes to Cruel and Masses out of Spring Hill. They called from Canton this evening, and they had something to come up, so they're gonna make it tonight, and we'll be getting those to them. We thank y'all. Hope y'all have a great time at Martin Luther Jr., and we'll be good.
All right, next, we have, y'all come on up here. Next, we have a proclamation honoring GM 413.
Man, that's huge. That's huge. Yeah.
Yeah. Now, this isn't everybody, but I can tell you, I don't know much about cheerleading, but I can tell you, if you get a trophy that big, you've done something, huh? So, uh...
Mayor, in order to do this, you gotta give us a cheer when you're done.
Be my last day here. Honoring Team Power of GM 413. Whereas, the City of Mindon seeks to recognize the important achievements of Team Power at GM 413, and whereas Carly Zalvador and Kelsey Holloman coached Team Power, a 3.2 senior prep all-star cheer team made up of 18 athletes ranging from 12 years old to 18 years old, whereas these athletes have worked extremely hard with sometimes physically taxing practices that they may last two or three hours at a time. Most of the team members are even involved in other sports in the community, and whereas during the sixth cheer season, GM 413 was honored when the members of Team Power competed and were named Division National Championships by the National Cheerleaders Association on February 24th, 2023. Now, therefore, Mayor Cox and the City Council of Mindon would like to formally recognize Team Power of GM 413 on its extraordinary performance, as the team demonstrated incredible skills, discipline, sportsmanship at the National Cheerleaders Association Championship. Y'all give them a hand.
At least a toe touch or something.
Oh, what a fun meeting this has been, I tell you. Um, okay, next, uh, we have, do we have any announcements from the audience? Anything y'all want to add? Michael, you have something?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna kind of turn away from y'all when I announce y'all. Thank to the mayor, the council, and the chief of police. This weekend, y'all, Saturday, was great for the JJ Snee parade. Many hours in phone calls and texts went in it, many meetings. How many days we been? But we had a ball, and I want to thank everybody who had anything to do with it. Appreciate y'all.
So in case y'all didn't know, Mindon has a Super Bowl champion that went to Mindon High, then Louisiana Tech, and then went on to win the Super Bowl this year with his team. A really good event, Michael Walker and, and his guys put together, uh, just really good. It, it felt good to see the community coming together to celebrate something so positive, so. Thank you, Michael Walker, for your hard work, and Randy Timms and all of y'all. Um, any other announcements from the audience, or? Okay, um, council comments. We'll start with Mr. Pendergrass.
Um, it's been a, a big, big day, a big month, and, um, just want to, um, encourage the, the new directors and chief, uh, to pursue unity and excellence in your departments, um, just as we're making an effort to do here.
I must have echoed that. The only thing I'd like to point out, I think, uh, first weekend in April is car show and flying show out at the airport, if I'm correct on that. I forgot to write it down, and, um, there was something else. I'm sorry, I can't think, so. It's been a long weekend, I apologize.
Ms. Mitchell?
I just want to say, um, thank, uh, Michael and Shaquita, uh, Walker, and the mayor, and Chief McGyver for this past weekend for the parade. I wasn't able to attend due to family illness, but, uh, they do a great things for the community, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miles?
I have nothing.
Chief?
Uh, just like to thank all the agencies that were involved in the parade. We had Louisiana State Police that was there with us, along with the Webster Sheriff's Office, uh, and the Mindon City Officers. They did a fine job at all the parades. I'm also jealous that the mayor and I didn't win anything in the parade. I mean, the two greatest bald-headed guys to come through there together, and we didn't get no prize. Could have brought in a trophy with a big bald head on it, couldn't we? But, uh, no, it was, it, the parades have been great, uh, just real good turnout from the citizens of Mindon. Uh, like to thank all, uh, the newly appointed positions tonight, all the heads, uh, be happy to work with you and, and glad to meet with you at any time. Uh, also, like to extend my condolences to, uh, Councilman Roy, uh, at the passing of a family, a close family member of his this week, and, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna echo that, too. We're praying for you, Mr. Roy, and your families. He lost his father over the weekend. Also, you know, in the last month, we've raised over $2 million for St. Jude. We've celebrated, uh, the good things that happen in our community. I just, I'm proud to be the mayor of Mindon. That's the...